Says it's connecting.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the February 15th, 2022 Litchfield Planning Board Meeting. Would you all please stand for the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Okay. Curtis is not going to be with us this evening. He did send an email saying that he can't make it. So I'm probably going to ask Sam, our alternate, would you mind filling in as a voting member?
No, I don't mind.
Okay, great. So we'll have Sam Terrell as our voting member for alternates this evening. And I'll start with the roll call of members present. Michael Proto, Chair.
Kate Stevens, Vice Chair.
Ron Stevens, Member.
Kimberly Queen, Selectman, Rep.
Sam Terrell, Alternate Member.
James Buffetti, Member.
Okay. And we have with us Jaimon Kara, our PRC Secretary of Water. Good evening. So first order of business, any public input this evening on non-agenda items, items not on the agenda for this evening, as any members of the public who wish to comment on non-agenda items. All right, hearing none, I'll close public input on non-agenda items and go to the business at hand. Jim Petropolis, Professional Engineer, Hayner Swanson Inc., and Rene Thoreau, Owner, to discuss work in the wetland buffer at 522 Charles Bancroft Highway, Tax map 22 lot 11. Is the applicant present?
We are.
Okay, good evening. Could you introduce yourself to the board?
Absolutely, for the record. My name is Jim Petropolis. I'm a civil engineer, professional engineer with Hayner Swanson, doing business at 3 Congress Street in Nashville, Hampshire, representing Rene Thoreau through our development. Rene is with us this evening. And with us is also Elizabeth Hardigan. She is with the firm of Goddessman and Hollis. And Elizabeth will likely be helpful in kind of painting a little bit of the history, recent history early of this project. I'm going to give it a go and do my best to do a couple of things this evening. First and foremost, as you just read in the record, Mr. Chair, we're seeking input to the zoning board of adjustment for proposed buffer impacts associated with the new project. It is in your ordinance here in Litchfield that the special exception for zoning board needs both concom input and planning board input. I plan on presenting an overview of Rene's proposed project. With a focus on the buffer impacts, I'm sure as planning board members, you're going to be looking at me saying, can you tell me about traffic or what can they tell me about re-escape and your lighting? We will get there. We will be back to you for you probably a couple of minutes with reports, studies, and architectural improvements. So really, I intended to present the project as an overview, talking about the buffer impacts. I will also ask, Mr. Chair, if I could, to bring forth a discussion also about work within the aquifer protection district. Part of our project is, requires a special exception from the zoning board of adjustment. And I believe at some point the code changed in the last few years, will they now require a TV input to that? Elizabeth mentioned to me late this afternoon, we should bring this matter forth for discussion about that, the storage units in the back. We have received the variance for that work. There is some question this evening about the past variances, what is the status of those, and that's kind of why Elizabeth has provided me some support this evening, because if we get into some of the weeds, what was approved and what's still out and what we need to go back for, we may need to talk about that a little bit. We'll cross that bridge when we get to it. First things first, I'd like to tell you a little bit about the project. It's probably one that many of the board members and town residents have heard about the last few years. And Rene and his brother Sylvain through our development, they have obtained a number of variances and special exceptions for a proposed mixed-use development, a gas station, convenience store, and self-storage facility. However, due to COVID and due to a couple of other setbacks, the project has experienced a bit of a delay. We had good momentum about a year ago, but a couple of factors changed the course of the project and we're back with momentum and back moving forward. Let's talk about the property. First of all, I want to get everybody located. The site is at 522 Charles Bancroft Highway. It is in the north part of town. It is a 15.3 acre parcel located in the northern commercial zone. And on the aerial you're seeing, the property is just south of the town lane. Moore's Crossing, I believe?
Moore's Falls.
Moore's Falls, yes, Moore's Falls. It's bordered on the east side by the Bancroft Highway, a couple of residents and I think an auto repair facility along Charles Bancroft to the south. You also see on the street St. Francis Church, and then on the valley lane to the west towards the Merrimack River. The property itself, as I said, 15.3 acres, there's quite slight topography. I think in the past, the front of the property had been used as a bus staging area over the years. It is fairly well gravelled at the front and then partially wooded if you move towards the west. In very slight topography, it's very gentle grade working from the front of the property to the back. Wetlands are an important part of the property. The southern border is Leech Brook, as well as the western border, and that flows and eventually connects into the Merrimack about 500 feet to the west. We also have map wetlands in the center of the property here, very poorly drained, so that ultimately helps drains and connects into the aforementioned Leech Brook. All that mapping has been done and runs through the town, the central criteria. Those buffers contain a series of setbacks for your Litchfield zoning ordinance, 100-foot leach, a Litchfield setback, a 75-foot building setback, and really a 50-foot no-touch, no-disturb buffer. This plan here conceptually represents the proposed development. It is a one-story gas convenience store located in the front of the property, and in the back will be a self-storage facility with fully assigned buildings. Can you hear me?
Shall I start over?
No, we can still hear you. Just hear you.
Thank you, sorry about that. So the gas convenience in the front is a one-story, about a 5,500 square foot building. It'll contain 32 parking spaces in and around the facility. I can call out on the screen. Here we go. There are gas dispensers and a canopy island in the front facility here. There will be drive-through component. It's Rene's vision to hopefully get a coffee user here so that coffee can be picked up in the drive-through manner, plenty of stacking around the building. The site will be accessed by a single curb cut on the Charles Bancroft Highway, and there'll be truck dispensers for gas in this location here in the southern part of the site. And what we have is a paved access road leading to the back to the aforementioned self-storage units, nine buildings, pavement around. And this facility is fully secure with fencing and a gate. Key elements to the project, you know, utilities, we'll have septic, we have municipal water, town water out in Charles Bancroft Highway, underground utility servicing, servicing the buildings. With regard to stormwater, I'll give you a quick overview of stormwater. We hope to capture the front part of the site in a stormwater practice here. There'd be a series of treatment practices, deep-sump catch basin, hoods within those catch basins, sediment forbay, extended detention here, and that'll outlet into the pipe system that picks up the runoff from the self-storage unit area and to another practice here, right here, for similar type qualitative and quantitative measures with an outlet to the wetland associated to Leech, to Leech Brook. Moving forward, if we're successful, as we hope, through the zoning board of adjustment, we'll be back to the planning board with a full application, full site plans, lighting plans, landscape plans, traffic studies, architectural studies, stormwater studies. And really, at those times, we'll come back and talk detail with this group. We're here tonight to talk about buffer impacts, and you'll see both on the TV monitor as well as the plan, the areas in yellow have been identified as disturbances to the no-disturb buffer area. And it's really three areas, a small 4,000 square foot area here, wetland impact area A, there's a rather larger impact to the buffer here for constructing the stormwater practice, and the access to get back to the building. This poorly drained area, the buffers overlap each other. There's a poorly drained finger here, and there's one here, and the buffers overlap, and that they get to the back land, we're disturbing the buffer here. And then there's a buffer disturbance in the back for the stormwater practice. In total, the buffer area is total 27,115 square feet. There are no wetlands being impacted as a result of the project. Of that 27,000 square feet of impact, only about 8% is pavement. The other 92% are fringes of the stormwater practices and edges of the road, and so they'll be loamed and seeded in a conservation mix and left to become a more naturalized look. So 92% of our impacts are returning to buffers. Overall, the project will have 75% open space in the project. Recently determined that there'll be some tree clearing right along the edge of the road here for site distance. We'll bring those calculations before the planning board in the future, but there's no, there might be some limbing of some trees, but there'll be no stumping or no removal of trees in those locations. Again, as part of the ordinance, we brought this plan before the Conservation Commission. Last year, we walked the site. We just brought it back most recently, and they had a favorable recommendation to the zoning board for this work. I did mention in my opening remarks about the aquifer protection area. One of the variances that was received was for the storage units in the aquifer protection district. I don't have the detailed research. I wasn't part of the project team at the time, but I will say this, that its storage units are a fairly clean use. They do not have septic, they do not have hazardous discharge. It is a, I feel a fairly benign use. We also now know that there's public water in this part of Litchfield as a result, I think, of the San Gobain matter several years ago. We feel that storage units in the aquifer area are less intrusive or less potential impact to the aquifer than many other uses that are allowed in the northern commercial zone. And we also feel that construction of a storage facility is a reasonable use with no harm to the public. Let me summarize, buffer impacts, we've tried to avoid, minimize, mitigate. Again, no wetland impacts. The impacts, the 27,000, 92% are, 92% of those are to be loamed and seeded and hopefully reconstitute as buffer. We have a pretty significant retaining wall right along this edge here so that we did not have a further intrusion into the buffer or the wetlands. So Rene has gone to a pretty good expense to attempt to minimize these impacts. We're using three-to-one side slopes off of our driveway. With that, Mr. Chair, I'd be happy to answer any questions about the impacts or even about the project, if you'd like to have any general questions. Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions? I have two. Okay. How many storage units are you proposing?
So there's nine buildings, sir, and the units themselves range to five-by-fives, to five-by-tens, to ten-by-twenty's, so that there's a whole series of them. I, Rene, you may know the total number. Yeah, but it's, they're not really measured per unit because they can be such a small space.
Okay, but nine buildings.
Nine buildings, yeah.
And how visible is it from, how visible will they be from Charles Bancroft?
Yeah, that's a good question. They're set back, some, at least 400 feet back from the road over a football field setback. We do have the ability that some of the vegetation back through this corridor will be protected. I would like to say that it'll be a minimal view, if any, and they'll be set lower as well. So if you go by the site now, what you really see is the gravel kind of parking in the front, and then it sits in the back. They'll be back there, there'll be lower buildings. I do think, a keen eye will see them, but they will not be a visible right-on-the-street type use.
I ask the storm, stormwater management areas, so the one that's closest to the gas station?
Yes.
And that would be runoff from, from the gas station area?
Yes.
Is that what it, get treated at all before it's released into the?
Yeah, so there's, we've tried to incorporate, you know, a series of different measures so that when they, when they act in a train, the goal here is to provide residents time to slow water down. And by slowing water down, it allows the settling of suspended solids in the stormwater. Oil and water, you would think from a gas station is different than oil and water from a bank site, let's say. And so we have a series of oil-water hoods within the catch basin that provide some separation of oil and water. We have deep-sump catch basins, a sediment forbay. So in, in a series, we attempt to remove the, the standard is about 80%, TSS is called total suspended solids. In this treatment training, we'll achieve that. And then ultimately, that will drain back into the piping and get a kind of a second cleansing back down here in this lower location, so.
So when you say you remove the solids, I'm thinking about petroleum products that may be, right, that may be spills or is it, there's an actual process of removing those solids on an ongoing?
So when I talk solids, I'm talking sand and grit and debris, like trash or something that may be in the stormwater. I think, sir, where you're heading is maybe that sheen that could come off of a paved parking lot?
Right.
Right, so gas is lighter than water, obviously, and so we create within these structures a protection so that there can be separation between the oil and the gas versus the water. And there'll be regular maintenance that will need to come out and clean that. There is, and I've learned this by, by working on this Rene's project, there's a whole series of measures and sciences associated with the gas station itself, and we will bring a gas station consultant to the planning board, and he will be able to convey to you all the different elements within a gas station for environmental protection.
Okay, I mean, it's, so for me, it's a little difficult to comment on this until I get a better sense of that, because there's going to be, my concern would be exactly, how do you protect the environment from this runoff of gasoline and oil spills or other, just sort of the normal, the conduct of business? Is there, I mean, is there a process for actually screening that, filtering out it, removing that, should there be?
Sure.
And so what would that, I mean, how does it actually work to protect?
Well, it's ongoing maintenance as a property owner, so they'll need to obviously maintain and keep inspections. Our stormwater report will include a recommended inspection and maintenance program for the overall system for the project.
But is there a filter of the water? So is it, does it regularly get filtered out?
No, it's stormwater. It's, again, as I just described, running through those various practices, the deep-sump catch basins, the oil hoods, the forbays, the extended detention in this location here. There is with herbaceous planting in and around the stormwater, there's uptake of certain pollutants normally associated with runoff that can occur in those stormwater practices.
I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, what is that maintenance that you talk about? What does that consist of?
Well, if I could be candid, it's just common sense. It's periodic maintenance after storm events, it's inspections in these structures, it's if you see product within the structure, that they would call somebody like Clean Harbors and they would come and evacuate the water out of the structure.
So there's no system in place to do that? You would rely on the goodwill or the diligence of the maintenance people at the gas station who are maintaining the property to make sure that that happened?
That's correct. And if I may, if I may, sir, the stormwater treatment measures don't have bearing on the buffer impacts that we're talking about. The buffer impacts are more spatial, you know, in order to meet the program, in order to gain access to the back, we're impacting buffers.
Okay, but, and I understand that that's, that you're looking for a more narrow comment, but I'm just wondering what the, you know, what the best practice is for, especially for a gas station and for dealing with runoff and dealing with the possibility that there could be pollutants that would be finding their way into the water system, into the, into the river that's nearby?
It's a fair comment. Gas stations are considered a high pollutant load at the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services, and so they take with it a little bit greater scrutiny in the review of the alteration of terrain permit process that we will have to abide by here.
If I could just jump in on that, too, there are best practices for gas stations for similar uses, both in terms of regular maintenance, emergency response, and those are all things that we can require, that those plans be submitted to the planning board, and planning boards can require that there is regular maintenance and that those reports are made to the town, if that's the wish of the board. And is this some process that you have to go through with DES to get approvals?
Well, there's several, you know. Stormwater is one of them. I just mentioned the alteration of terrain. There's also underground storage tanks for fueling that is a DES permit process as well.
And that process hasn't happened yet, is that right? It's too early for that?
Yes, sir, right, yeah, right.
Okay, I understand.
So how did you size this, that big retention area? And is there any way we could make it any smaller to minimize the impact on the buffer zone there?
So, you know, the science of stormwater design is one based on assumption. You assume a rainfall event, you assume a ground condition, you assume soil conditions. We have run numbers, and those sizes are correct, and these are the sizes that are needed to, we wanted independence from the gas than from the storage units, and of course, the storage units is lower. We wanted independence between the two systems, even though that they are connected. And so the sizing is based on land area, sir, and a particular storm. We designed to, I believe, the 25-year storm event, we checked for the 50-year storm event. So it's a, it's a big slug of rain that we designed drainage to. It's not necessarily the one-inch storm event.
So you expect that to reach its limit once in about 25 years?
Well, we would, we would size it to reach its limit during a 50-year event, yeah. Which has a, it's not, it's kind of a misnomer. It's not once every 50 years, it just means it has a 2% chance during that year to occur.
Yeah, okay.
The Mother's Day storms of 2006 and 2007 were back-to-back 100-year storm events. So, and they have a 1% chance of occurring.
There was a lot of talk over a long period of time about the entrances into this facility. I see you're smiling there, just from my own understanding, you mentioned there was one coming in off of Free A.
Yes.
Is there another one on that Moore's Falls area there, or is it just going to be the one?
Yeah, it's just the one curb cut here, that's correct.
I just want to be updated on?
Yes.
A lot had gone on there.
Yes, yeah. There's some history and there's some reasons for that, I won't bore you with that, but it's one curb cut, and it's likely there'll be a front door improvement, and you will see that when we come back to you. When I say front door improvement, you know, there'll be, I'm understanding there'll be a left turn pocket to provide safe haven for a person wanting to make a left turn in to the facility.
So I was hearing that the state required two curb cuts, but now they, you're gonna have, now you have one, okay.
What you wanted to initially, I think.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And is that something that you've already gone to DOT to get?
We've had discussions with DOT, yes.
And they've, have they signed off on the one curb cut, or is that still too premature for that?
We're not at the finish line yet, but one is what they will grant this property.
So obviously, this is a recommendation to the zoning board, which you're requesting is for special exception. In terms of the special exception, I guess my question is, what is the zoning board, they're going to look at the criteria, I assume, for under, for wetlands? Is that what this is for?
Special exception criteria, yes, sir.
Okay, and that's, I believe that's 1208.01 of our land-used ordnance. So in terms of, I guess, I guess the question is going to be, you know, do you meet that criteria for the zoning board to grant you the exception? And so 1208.01 identifies, so it would be granted if the following conditions are met, the proposed used construction under alteration shall be constructed in a way that does not unduly restrict the flow of water. Okay, so have you met that, or do you believe that you have met that standard? Because there's several criteria that have to be, are these criteria, I guess my question is, are these, because I'm not on the zoning board, so we don't deal with variances and stuff like that, or special exceptions. But when the zoning board is looking at this, are they going to be looking at those criteria, all of those criteria, or is it some of them?
Absolutely all of them, sir.
Okay.
And we will need to address each and every criteria to give them the facts of the case and give them the information for them to make the decision.
Okay, but that doesn't mean that the planning board has to address all of them. You can choose to address whichever. Ones that we want to address, okay, all right. No, because I was just, I mean, in terms of us giving a recommendation, I guess it was my question is that, I guess, what are you looking from? I guess my question was, what would you be looking from us in terms of to satisfy that requirement for the special exception? Obviously, the Conservation Commission has made a determination, they recommend to the zoning. So I guess our question is, what are, is there something that, in terms of making your case, that you have met all of the requirements for A through, is it H?
Sure, you know, that, I don't mean to confuse you.
We're just looking for a comment. We're not looking for recognition. If you have any comments towards the use to the CBA, that's all that we're looking for.
Okay, all right.
You've seen it somewhere, you've seen the project, and you have any specific comments you want to make to the CBA, nothing more, nothing less, because you know you're going to get full stab at the apple when we come back with all of the requirements that you guys normally see.
Right, no, I understand that. I just want to make sure that, you know, we're not missing anything that's important. Okay. So, I mean, obviously, I think what you're trying to address is basically the impacts to the wetlands, that there's a minimal impact to this project, is that what you're, when you say buffers?
It is, it is, sir, you know. I've learned over the years with regard to wetland and buffers, three simple words, avoid, minimize, mitigate. I'd like for you to think that, have we tried to avoid these buffer, the wetlands? And the fact that we're not filling any wetlands, I think, is key. We're using a retaining wall here to minimize buffers, we're using steeper side slopes than we're. We're using steeper side slopes than we normally would want to use here. So we feel like we're avoiding, we're working in the developed portions of the property. Clearly, Leech Brook is a wonderful resource, the main, the main body of that brook and the main wetland associated with that brook is not, has not been being touched. Minimization is, again, as I said, with the walls and the slopes. And then mitigation, you know, mitigation really here falls into, you know, the fact that 75% of this property is open space, even though it is a northern commercial zone. We didn't really get into any distinct mitigation measures with the Conservation Commission because it was primarily a buffer impact. Generally, when you're impacting wetlands, the mitigation becomes a little bit higher order. So that would be our position, that, you know, the applicant, given the, given the proposed use, is attempted to avoid, minimize the buffer impact, something like that.
And you had said the Conservation Commission didn't have any concerns?
The Conservation Commission gave it a good, hard look, of course. You know, that's their forte. We met in 2000, at the end of 2020. We walked the site about a year ago, inspected all the wetlands, spent a couple hours out there, and then most recently came back to them and reviewed with them the criteria as well as the project, and they had a unanimous favorable recommendation to the zoning board of adjustment. I think if we had a proposal that had a 200-space parking lot in the wetland, a Conservation Commission would likely not want to support that, and we would understand that.
You had mentioned 32 parking spaces?
Yes.
And that is where?
Yep. So it's approximately, I think, 18 in front, 10 in the back, and then several on the side. The spaces in the back are generally employee spaces, you know, there'd be six to eight employees throughout the course of the day. But your traditional car parks right in front of a gas C store, they call them convenience store, that's fairly typical.
And how big is the building going to be?
5,500 square feet.
As a convenience?
Yeah, so it's not a big, it's not a big building. There'd be, I think Renee's vision is, you know, the ability to get a sandwich there at lunchtime, the ability to get coffee and a doughnut maybe. And the gas C stores, well, let me say this, I'll tell you what it's not. It's not some of the big beauties that are being built today, the Cumberland Farms. I mean, they're magnificent, and they're huge, but they light up the sky, and they're massive. It's much less in scope, much less in size. It've kind of replaced the old neighborhood store, was what I wanted to say as well.
So is this comparable to that Irving?
No.
Station off of Wazurk, right before you got to Wazurk?
It's smaller, I believe, sir.
And just so I'm clear, so the Conservation Commission actually reviewed this, and they supported?
No, I wouldn't say support. We didn't have any objection to it.
Okay.
And that was because, I believe, because of the impact to wetlands, they didn't really, it was minimal, so.
Well, there are no impacts.
No impacts at all.
Buffer yards that are impacted.
And how many, are there a lot of trees to be cut?
Well, that's into the next phase, I think, with the planning board.
Yeah, it's, you know, it's not mature growth, sir. If, there's not a lot of mature growth. It looks like the piece had been forested, if you look at this photo, especially, it's kind of sparse in the areas we're proposing to develop. Clearly, as you get down the back property line and along, along Moore's Falls, there's some mature trees, but in, in the areas that we're looking to develop, it's fairly sparse.
Thank you.
If you brought, if you, quick question, if you took, brought back one of the buildings and only had 15 buildings, no, we said nine buildings, so if you had eight buildings, then would the detention pond be any smaller? Probably not, because you still have all of them now. Bring it up, bring it up, detention pond up further east?
Well, I think, given the context of the question, Joan, sure, you know, less billing means more area for stormwater.
Well, I'm just thinking, because there are a lot of tree cutting in that lower detention area, so that if you bring it up just a little bit, you know, leave some of the larger trees, so that, because we're going to have a big impact on Moore's Falls area, larger impact visual on Moore's Falls than to the Charles Bank Road.
Yeah.
Is that something that the Conservation Commission looked at or considered?
They didn't really discuss that, no.
Okay. Yeah, because that was, I know that's probably a later question, but that's, one of my concerns would be the impact on Moore's Falls.
We did discuss it in the field, when we were in the field a year ago, somewhat. You could see a person walking over there. When we were on this property, we could see clearly a person walking on the Moore's Falls site.
Yeah.
Jay, do you have any comments?
Kim does.
It's really just a comment. I've just, you know, been on the board for, I don't know, five, so years. This is the first time I've seen two businesses at once going in. You know, usually we'd do the gas station, and then we might do a storage facility. So I'm just, is this okay to do? I just haven't come across it. We just have to give scrutiny on both.
Yeah, I would say so.
Okay. I'm just getting used to that, just to be prepared on the research.
Similar to, say, a shopping center, you know, where you'd see multiple uses on one commercial site.
Okay.
I mean, just in terms of comments, I mean, this, in terms of the impacts here, it does appear that they've, you know, strived to minimize them. They seem to be, correct me if I'm wrong, strictly related to access and drainage.
Correct.
And if they ever heard you right, you know, 92% of the disturbed area would be regrown, would have regrowth, so very little pavement. So to me, the impacts are pretty minimal, although I do hear what Joan's saying about Moore's Falls. You know, just a couple other things I just wanted to throw out there, assuming this does come back to the Board for Site Plan. One, just a note that we did, we do have posted zoning changes in the northern commercial zone, which definitely worth taking a look at. In particular, there is a sidewalk requirement along the frontage, which you should, you know, want to just note. Assuming that a sign package is going to be a part of this, we did change the sign regulations about two years ago, with regard to digital signs, electronic messaging. So if there is going to be that aspect, I'd, you know, just say, take a look at the, you know, updated language, and, you know, a reminder, too, we do have design guidelines for the building.
Right.
Buildings themselves that are, you know, worth taking another.
Yes, we're aware of, we're aware of the upcoming warrant articles. And sidewalk will be part of our proposal back before you.
So we're not required to comment, right? I mean, we can simply say.
We do not have to comment.
We have no comments at this.
We can say we have no comments at this time, or we could say we have no comments for this, you know, request for special exception going forward. Certainly, it sounds as though the applicant will be back before this board at some point if they get what is required from this special exception. But like I said, no, it's not a requirement. I think as their attorney said, it's basically a comment period and an opportunity to, you know, just address things. So if the zoning board has sort of a, they can rely on that data from CommCom, or they can rely it from us, the planning board.
If the board decides not to comment, then we would just, you know, convey that to the zoning board, right? Planning board has our comments.
I'd make a motion that we make no comment at this time.
Okay. I have a motion by James, I have a second by Ron. Is there any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor of recommending no comment to the zoning board of adjustment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, abstained, motion passes 6-0-0.
Okay, thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
Appreciate it.
And we appreciate it.
We will see you soon.
Okay, very good.
Thank you, everyone. Have a nice evening.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. Thank you. Next item on the agenda for this evening, committee reports. Any reports from any committees? Kim?
Yes, the next vote of selection meeting will be on Monday, February 28th, at 6:30 PM here at the Town Hall. I'm going to go in order of dates. Election Day is on our website, posted for March 8th, from 7 to 7 at Campbell High School Auditorium. And then Nashua Regional Planning Commission has our quarterly full commissioner meeting Wednesday, March 22nd, at 7 o'clock PM at their headquarters in.
22nd?
Yep, March 22nd, in Temple Street in Nashua. 30 Temple Street.
The Conservation Commission meets beginning of March, the, March 3rd? Yep, at 6:30 here in Town Hall. The Lower Merrimack Local River Advisor Committee has not met, or they, well, I shouldn't say that, I think they did have a meeting, I did not go to that meeting, but it was, I don't think there were any projects on the table at that meeting. Have a good night. Thank you.
Did you get your flash drive?
Oh. I know there has been, something just to bring up on that, the river advisory committees, in terms of that, the, there is legislation going on, right, I think it's still going on, to add to the Lower Merrimack Local River Advisory Committee, the City of Manchester, Town of Bedford, Hookset, and combine them along with Litchfield, Merrimack, Nashua, Hudson. I know that the chair of the lower advisory committee that I, that I sit on, basically sent in a letter stating that he opposed that, didn't feel that it was necessary to lump everybody in together. I think there's a whole debate about whether to lump them in, or to keep them separate, or have their own advisory committee. So there's a, there's a lot going on there.
Is that, is that a bill in legislature, or?
Yeah, I believe there was a bill in the legislatures, yeah. That I was going around, I don't know what hap, I don't know if they had a hearing on it, and I don't know.
I'll have to take a look.
Yeah, but I do remember Fran, I think it was Fran Murphy who sent the letter to DES and to the legislature stating that they didn't think that was, they didn't really want that, so. Because it was kind of like, we would have, you know, be imploded with projects from Bedford, Manchester, Hookset, and that was.
I was just thinking from pollutant loading, I think Manchester is the largest contributor of sewer overflow for the entire river.
Exactly, so, yeah. So it certainly would be nice to see them, like Manchester, maybe Bedford, Hookset have their own advisory committee, that would be, probably be a good thing, but I don't know, we'll see.
Is Manchester part of the, the Lower Merrimack? Is the river, that section of the river in?
No.
No.
As you go up, where the Amis Gate, and I think the dam is, if you go past up into Hookset, then that's where the upper, I think it's called the Upper Merrimack River Advisory Committee, they have theirs, but we, Manchester doesn't, so. And the Capital Improvement Committee meeting, I believe, will be scheduled for March sometime. I did talk to Troyal after town meeting, so that will be coming. And that's all I have. Jake, do you have anything?
Nope, we just had deliberative on February 5th, and the budget committee doesn't meet again until after town meeting, so I don't have anything else.
Good. And I just want to say, shout out to you, you did a fantastic job at the last meeting, and you all did a fantastic job. I watched, I was actually watching you, believe it or not, on TV, even though I wasn't here. I did get an opportunity to watch the meeting, so you guys did great. That was a, it was a good, great meeting. I thought you did very well.
Thank you.
Questions and stuff, so, good job, and good job chairing, and thank you for chairing at the last minute, so. Appreciate it. Approval of the February 1st, 2022 minutes. Anybody have an opportunity to look at those, have any questions or comments?
I had one question at the top of the page, and maybe I'm just reading it, reading it wrong, but on the top of page two, it says, there are three parking spaces per unit and two spaces for the units in the remaining house. And I was.
All right.
Where are you, page two?
The very first sentence on page two. And I wasn't sure what that was. Is that referring to the farmhouse?
One garage and two outside?
That's the house that they're gonna, they're gonna keep.
Okay, I was reading it wrong, I think.
I have, my top on page two says, LC engineering comments are being addressed.
Oh, so it's the sentence right before that?
Right before that, so.
There are three parking spaces per unit.
Yeah.
And two spaces for the units in the remaining house. Okay, so it should be three parking spaces per unit.
And two spaces for each?
For each.
Each of the two units in the remaining house.
Right.
Okay. I was, the way I was reading, I was like, did she mean to say remaining area? Like, I was thinking, like, in, inside the house?
Yeah, two spaces for each of their, two units in the remaining house.
Okay, so, yeah, if you wouldn't mind clarifying that.
Got it.
Thank you.
Motion to approve the minutes as amended?
Okay, I have a motion by James to approve the February 1st minutes. We have a second by Ron. Do we have further discussion? All right, all those in favor of approval of the minutes for February 1st, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, abstained, aye. Motion carries 5-0-1. Okay. Any other business? Jay, do you have anything?
I do not.
Okay. Joan, do you have anything?
Just that I said before the meeting started, I did just email you tonight Lou Karen's letter regarding traffic for Corning Farm Site Plan. I was going to wait till his second letter, but I thought since people probably went out there tonight, that I would send this one out. It was dated February 7th. I'm sure Lou will have another letter, because he just got the second report on Saturday.
Anybody go out tonight? Did you by yourself?
I did.
I was there for 10 minutes, maybe.
I was there for 57 minutes. I counted, counted every car that went by.
Yeah. What time of that, what was?
I went, I started at 4:25 PM, and just under an hour later, I left. There were a lot more cars than I had anticipated, especially going north. Going north, yeah.
Oh, that's interesting.
You have your count?
I have my count, you know, did you want to hear them? Bear with me, I might be off one or two, because I was.
You gotta go back out and count again.
Under S, south, north. And so did the guy that takes care of the place.
Oh, yeah.
I counted 368 cars going south. I counted 301 cars going north. And I counted, and I know this count is off, because it's more than what I'm saying right now, there were 123 cars that used Corning Road either coming from it or going to it. A lot more than I thought.
Yeah.
It's a lot, yeah.
But I will say, when I was sitting there, and I was only there for about 10 minutes, but around 5 o'clock, and there was definitely, like, noticeable breaks that you could make a left turn out of the site easily, within, within a few seconds.
I'm guessing.
Sounds like a lot of cars, but it was, like you said, it was groups.
It was, it was waves, like, I'm guessing that that traffic, like, way down near the gas station, at Irving, I think that is what made it go in waves. But I will say that there was more traffic in that time period of about 5:10 to 5:25 when I left, or just before that, than in any other period. So I think if I stayed longer, I would have seen more.
Yeah. If you'd said 06, probably.
If you'd said you were six, probably.
I was there this morning. And I had a very good education, I was surprised on some things. I was there from 8:15 to about 8:45, so if anybody saw a black car taking pictures, that was me, I have pictures for folks. I was surprised at the entrance today across from Corning. The sun blinds you at that time, it's tough to see.
Yep, so coming out of Corning?
Just, if I'm trying to come out of Corning. Not Corning, if I'm coming out of the Dark Hole Farms, Corning's in front of me. Or if I'm in front of that dirt road further down, I'm facing the sun. So that's tough. I was surprised, it was, at that time, I can't speak for 7:00 in the morning, more cars going south than north. At least visually, same as you. I went down to the dirt road, where, you know, the other entrance is now. And I was surprised, some of the trees have been cut back, or there's not trees there now. You really do have a clear shot, if you're turning left, of what's coming. You know, as the road bends as it's going down. I went up further to, I passed where the existing Dark Hole Farm entrance is, and Corning's here. And I went further, I followed the fence a little further north up to, what is it, Forest Street? Is that where the other entrance is going to be?
When you were heading south.
I was heading south, I went, what is it, Forest Street is the next one? That, that is a nice, it's clear, you can see everything from both directions, less traffic because they're not coming out of Corning. I have a indicator on my car that beeps if something gets too close to me. And when I was sitting at Dark Hole Farm trying to take a left, people were going over the white line and my car was going beep beep beep. And I saw a bus come out of Corning and go over the yellow line. You know, so it's, it's existing, it's a terrible intersection.
How about when you're, what about the scenario, when you're coming out of Corning, and now you're going to have these two entrances at the farm, you're going to have to watch both of those if you're turning left.
Coming out of Corning.
If you're, if you stop at Corning and you're going to take a left onto 3A.
Yeah.
And those, then those two drivers will be existing. If traffic will be coming out of there.
Yep.
When I was at Dark Hole Farm, point, you know, Corning's across from me. What was I going to say here? A right lane would not help, you know, because people would just, they were going around the other car to, you know, into, into the lane, so. Yeah, it's tough, but the blinding light, we need to maybe look at. Further up the road, you don't have it because the trees are covering it, you know, the end of the fence heading south. But I just don't know where the actual entrance is going to be.
There was a stake, it wasn't across from Corning, it was further.
Further up.
South.
Further south.
Well, south and north, I mean, depending on which way, entrance you're talking about.
Well, she's talking about the, with the sun.
Yeah, but when you're looking at those two homes, the sun is in your eyes, you can barely see. I took a picture so you could see.
Down by where the other road, the north road's coming out, oh.
That's just something to think about.
Right, that's right between Brett Lamir's house.
But that's 8:15, not 7, but still.
We did say that if, if there's anything that is encouraging the cars to use the southern entrance, it helps the traffic flow, is that right?
It will, but if you're trying to leave, the southern entrance will help. But if you're up further north, it's tough because of the light.
Well, that's what I'm saying, so if I were to live, if I were living there, I probably would take the extra, you know, if it's an easier way out, the southern entrance, I'm going to go down.
But remember, Corning Road, they don't stop at that stop sign, I'm seeing just, it's a, it's a roll to go out. It's just, it's a dangerous thing.
As, with the time of year, it won't always be right there.
True. I don't remember, please remind me on the plan, we know where the dirt road is, down further north. Where is the other entrance going to be, the existing entrance or further down?
Are you talking about the north or south?
Going, going south. Right now, you know where Dark Hole Farms, we enter, right now. Is that going to be there, proposed, it's further, further south. Perfect, good, because that's where it's easier. It's good, that's what I was seeing, it was straighter, you had good line of vision.
Right, and that's where the mailboxes will be.
The mailboxes will be there, and the trees were not blinding you, you could actually see. But again, I don't know what's 7:00 in the morning.
You got a gas station with a coffee shop in. People are going to be turning. Yeah, you know, the, the surprise for me was, if you're in the northern, proposed northern exit, and you want to take a right, right, then so you're heading down towards where Corning is. And if the, there's a, there's a curve, and if there are cars that are backed up, looking to take a, looking to, either waiting for someone to take a turn onto Corning, it's really hard to see cars coming around that bend going, going north.
If they're stacked, yeah.
Yeah. It's.
If you're heading south, you mean, and?
Yeah, so if you're heading, if you, yeah, if you're heading north, or, yeah, if you're heading north, coming out of that exit. On the northern exit. Because, because you could, cars that zip around there, right, they pass Corning, but, but you really can't see those cars, especially if there are other cars that are lined up for waiting to take a turn into Corning, right, you block the view. And, I mean, that seems to me the more problematic part of the, of the, of the road. The other, the other side, you know, the other, if you were coming, if you were coming south, it seemed like the view was pretty good, that you could see the cars coming around that bend, which is, I think, what somebody had said, they were concerned about that at the, one of the hearings we had. But I think it was the other side that seemed to me more problematic.
We did get a contact of an engineer DOT, and our building inspector thinks that we should have a chat with DOT and fully understand what they expect and what, it's, 3A is their road, is New Hampshire DOT's road. And there's going to be a lot going on there, and we haven't heard anything from DOT.
We could certainly reach out because DOT's got to approve those curb cuts. Right.
And they, they did say they know about everything, but it would be nice to know what, you know, if they think left turn lanes would be advisable, or what they thinking. Didn't they say something tonight about a left turn lane?
On to, on, where? I didn't hear them say that.
The gas station.
You mean on 3A? Into what, Corning?
No, into the gas station.
I didn't hear that. Oh, I didn't hear that.
Okay.
I think turning, turning left once you get in.
Especially if that gas station, you know, is a project that comes up, it's just down the road. You know, I don't know how much traffic. And I can tell you that, you know, it's, and it's probably much less here than they would be at that Irving station on, by Wazurk. That thing is pretty busy. You know, there were some days when there were cars, and mostly lined up for the, for the coffee and donuts. But there can be cars that almost go onto the, onto the road, you know, that are waiting in line to get there.
You're sitting near Roundstone?
Yes, yeah, I mean, it's pretty, it's a pretty busy. I've seen it, it's a pretty busy gas station and coffee shop.
Yeah, UPS trucks all lined up and everything.
This one probably won't be as busy, but this is, could be busy.
Yeah.
This gas station will be a busy place. Right, all those cars you counted. Right, I mean, that's, that's where they're going to go, that's where people are going to go.
And the one thing I didn't mention is that the people who were coming out of Corning, if they didn't hit it just right, they were waiting for a few minutes to, to get there, to make their turn. If they caught the, the low end of the wa, of the wave, then they were able to go.
Yeah.
But when those waves came, they, they were like 15 to 20 cars at a time, coming both ways. So it was tough to get out, they had to wait for a few minutes.
What about having charging stations at these gas stations now? Is that, is that still not something that is, that is being designed?
Not really, because the, you know, duration of stay is short.
Yeah.
So usually you're trying to get charging stations where people stay longer.
Don't they have them now, though, that, that they have a faster charge?
Yeah, but it's still a wait, it's, it's, yeah. So more, you're trying to get them into places, obviously work sites.
Yeah.
Certainly, needless to say, homes, or places where people are going to be for a while. Like putting them at a mall is, you know, logical, parking garages, parking lots, anyplace people are going to be for a while. But not too many people are going to want to go and hang out at a gas station, even for 30 minutes. You know, people are just not going to want to do that. Interesting. Something we should be thinking about, though, I think, for site plans generally in the future.
Didn't we put something in?
I think we talked about it.
There was some reference to something that we revised.
Yeah, I think, yeah, we did discuss, there was something.
There was something. For any site where there's going to be longer term stays, it's really something we want to think about.
Well, right, and, you know, what today's technology allows for charging, you know, in five years, that may be something.
Right, and, and even if they don't install the chargers, you certainly want to make sure the infrastructure's there, because if not, it's really disruptive to try to install it.
Right.
So it does make sense.
Yeah.
And if we do ever get any warehousing and distribution facilities, it certainly makes sense at those. Any, any place where vehicles are going to be. And that's definitely the wave of the future for those sites.
How many electric vehicles are in Litchfield roughly?
I.
Something we can find?
I don't think we can find.
The town.
Yeah.
Keeps any of that.
Would that be indicated on a registration?
You pay your excise tax.
You know the vehicle make and model on the registration, so.
But there's not like a E they put next to it?
I don't think so.
I can ask.
Yeah.
And might, that'd be, might be interesting if they know that, and if they can break it down.
Yeah.
Geographically.
Right.
Because we're going to need to know that, to decide whether, you know, maybe one charging station at a large warehouse is enough.
Well, the thing is, they're not charging, if they're in town, then they're charging at home.
They're charging at home?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
So it's, maybe we want to put something in, like, as far as how, same thing with how the, how, you don't see those big giant banks of charging stations unless you're at a rest stop, like those fast chargers, like you'll see them along 95 and Mass Pike and everything. But you're not going to see them, you wouldn't get a big giant bank of chargers here because there's not a ton of traffic flowing.
Yeah.
There's no need for it.
Yeah, you see them in malls, in mall parking lots.
And if you have commercial vehicle fleets, that's where you really want to see them.
Yeah.
I just wanted to mention it because a lot of times on 95, I'll see there's 15 charging stations and nobody charging.
Yeah.
And I know that number will increase as the years go on, but.
Yeah.
We just want to be careful not to make too many of them when we do.
Right. Interesting. We could have all been charging while we were in this meeting.
Yes.
Charging stations at Town Hall.
That's right.
Well, I think that was the, what we were talking about, was putting one out here, yeah.
We were, as.
I think that was with the town station.
Yeah, I think it was even a conversation with the fire station.
Yeah, yeah. And people could come in and take care of their tax bills and.
Right.
Well, there's funding coming.
Yeah.
And, and they are going to be looking at municipal fleets, so.
Yep.
It's something we will be looking at for sure. Something to look at down the road, or keep on the radar, so, good. So I, I don't have any other business this evening. I don't have adjourn on my agenda, so. Stuck here, no, I'm just kidding. So if anyone wants to entertain a motion to adjourn, I'll accept it. Okay, yeah, motion, do I have a second? Wait a second, any discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, abstained, motion passes 6-0-0. Thank you for joining us this evening, we'll see you in March. Good night.